Very much. We are recording tonight because Mr. Stewart will not be with us. But ask that you speak up on item number six if you picked up on this, plus on the film just in case he has to go back and clarify something when he was able to make the transcriptions later. And tonight we have basically, you saw your new agenda that was at your place. Didn't necessarily have to change it, but we are having a presentation at a regular meeting by Birmingham Iron and doing an Arbor Day proclamation. So those are the two items ready, the agenda you have in front of you. Otherwise, tonight, we've got the resolution follow-up with the municipal agreement that let the We Are One group use the city as a conduit in order to be able to use facilities. It's actually two resolutions that tie together. You have received copies of what was going over. The discussion last time mainly centered around the fact that Leslie had not perused those. They have now been thoroughly perused. What we approved tonight is the mayor's authorization to go ahead and execute pending two things. Number one, their agreement to what we put in the new two documents, and then them producing proof of liability insurance and indemnity.
Yes, but I wouldn't make the motions contingent on anything. Those are just part of the process.
Correct. So any particular question? It looks like it can go forward right now. There's nothing holding it up. Go ahead, did you have questions?
Yes, so I just want to clarify, so the city would not be liable for anything, including the insurance, the additional insurance that they were asked to?
Well, the city has not been asked to provide any additional insurance.
I meant "and one" or whatever, "We Are One."
We Are One is being required to obtain insurance and have the city as a main insurer for both liability insurance as well as auto insurance. And they have stated that they are agreeable to the limits that have been put in the agreement and that they are working on obtaining that. I've actually communicated with your insurance. They have said, you know, that they're working on it. And before the agreement becomes effective and they're authorized to use Irondale mental gym, then they will have to provide that document to us. And they agree to do so.
So that basically covers the two initial resolutions you had.
I'd like to go a little further with that. My FMA.
Go ahead, please.
You know, it says that the policy is to pay $1 million per incident per person, the way I understood it. So what if somebody gets hurt and dies and they sue the city for $10 million? Then we're going to be liable for the bounce, the nine million on top of that?
Well, we would always have all of the usual defenses that we would have. We would defend the city by saying that this was not our responsibility. The only responsibility that we are agreed to is that to the extent the county school board becomes liable, then they are going to be looking to us. We then in turn are going to be looking to We Are One.
And they're not going to have any money to come up with?
They're not going to have anything other than the insurance that they have. You're absolutely correct about that. But we still have our immunity defenses and just defenses on the actual claim as to, you know, we didn't do anything negligent in this, the fact that, you know, I can't speculate as to what happened.
Yeah, I understand.
But I do understand, I mean, we can always increase the amount of insurance that we want to require. It may make it cost prohibitive for them, but that's else.
The thing I'm thinking about is if we get sued for $10 million and they win the case, then we have, we're liable to the city for nine million. Is everything went as bad as it could go and we lost every step of the way and everything
went wrong, then hypothetically, you are correct.
Okay.
Second question, now it's John here. It says on item number four, page two, use of board property, that We Are One supplies a schedule for us to give to the county.
Right.
All right, and right below that, the next sentence, it says, "We ensure that all program participants comply with the board rules and policies." Will there be, will each participant given a copy of that or will it be posted somewhere so that they'll be aware of what they are?
The county is required to give us the rules and policies that they are going to be looking. The county school board has to give that to us. And then we then in turn have to require that We Are One provides that to their participants.
All right, that's all I've got on that one. You turn that heat back down there if you want to.
I'll do that at the break, I guess. Okay?
Let's go wait till the break.
Any other questions on that particular item? At this point, Council, go ahead, Councilors, we have.
Are we still liable to have someone there at the council room at the gym when it's in use even if We Are One using it?
I think it's something the city and county, the county's going to work out.
Well, we don't have to be there, but we are responsible to pay for the cost of one board employee on site.
The city is going to pay for it?
That's what the department coming from the county school board. My understanding that they have sworn they had not actually built us for that.
The city has never paid. It's always been the person that used to use the facility paying. The city has never paid that.
Oh, okay.
The city has never paid.
Got you.
Yeah, that probably needs to be added to the indemnification agreement with We Are One. Because I didn't know, all I knew was that the city had never been built without it.
The city has never paid that. That's always been on the youth basketball program, pay that person for being there.
Okay, well, then we need to make, I need to add that into the indemnification agreement.
Yeah. That would be the normal girl basketball court, we just hope to.
I think, I think we can change the wording in that, in that board says, "We Are One agrees to reimburse the city for any cost that may incur as a result of the use of board property by We Are One, specifically including but not limited to the cost of the board providing one employee on site during the program use of any board property."
Yeah, you're right.
So that's going to be right there, that there, We Are One is going to pay, reimburse the city for the county employee.
That's right, honestly, I forgot I put that in there.
Okay, so that's, that's covered that.
At this point, you're satisfied with your agreement. Council London, since you came in, I think all the questions have been answered now. This way, did you have any particular questions?
Leslie and We Are One was working it out. I was maybe on there, I read over some of it.
Okay, and the last one had to do with the waiver of right for enforcement of the agreement with Infinity Hospital. And I think Counselor Spivey, you may have had some question on that, what it actually involved?
Yeah, so, I mean, I read through it. It was just, it was just a ton of just text that really didn't mean much to me, to be totally honest with you. I thought the, and I know I was not here when the original deal was struck, I knew that they were, they had funded the bond, basically, so that whenever it became called, that we would have the money to pay it off and they would just, we would go our separate ways. I thought that was in 2020, though. I mean, are we, are we absolving them now?
This has nothing to do with that. This was, this was in reference to their agreement to put a clinic here, the clinic in the round.
Okay, gotcha.
And as best I could tell, about spending two weeks on it.
Exactly.
I originally had thought I'd heard, but I think maybe that's incorrect, that they were supposed to commit for at least a year to have that clinic there. Actually, I think they were supposed to within a year to open a clinic there, which they did. There was, as best I know, there was no end time for how long they had to operate. They weren't asking for this, actually, you know, because of the property owner, Ron Radlin, wanted to sell the property.
Right, that makes sense.
They wanted to get, make sure that everybody's release pretty clear. So that's why, that's why they're wanting this off of us, is just to say, we fulfilled our obligation. We put a clinic there, obviously, we would.
Okay.
And it references paragraph two, section two of the old settlement agreement. That paragraph relates specifically to obligation to build extended hours of money.
Gotcha.
So that's the east that's being released.
Okay.
And it doesn't impact their payments on the bond that they're doing?
That's the one thing I was just wanting to.
Doesn't touch that in any way, shape, form, or fashion.
Because they have so many different entities with Grandview, the Trinity, the clinic, so I just wanted to make sure I knew what we were doing.
Can't believe what we went through to find out exactly on everything.
All right, I'm cool. That's, that's good. That's good enough for me.
Does anybody else have any questions on that one?
No, I'm all right.
Now, after clarification with our council, we can do all three items on consent tonight unless somebody has a desire to show their vote, so that they may not feel comfortable with doing it on consent.
Are you good with it?
I'm fine.
Okay. So those, those three items will be on consent tonight when we get ready for the vote.
I don't think they've had a clinic there for several years anyway, have they?
I've heard about it.
Yeah.
You want to vote?
I was going to vote the last one. The other two is fine. I'm going with the other two.
You want to vote on the last one?
I'm not.
Okay, so one and two on consent, and number three, we'll do it to ready to vote.
Yeah, that's good.
When we're doing the agenda. Any other questions or any other things we need to discuss so we don't get bogged down in regular council tonight? And Mayor, I see we had the one presentation by our new football league team. Is that something you've had a chance to get an idea of what he's actually doing for us or giving us?
He just, he just wants to come and talk for a minute. He's going to take the minute or two of my time on the new league that is here in the area of Birmingham Iron. It'll be Jay Roberson, former Birmingham City Councilman, who is now working with that team. That's all.
And we had the Arbor Day resolution last year, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I think it's an annual thing. I just got that today, so I figured we'd go ahead and knock that out. This is Arbor Day week.
I heard on the way over, on the radio on the way over here that they were having time, the league was having financial troubles and one of the owners put up $250 million to take the road for this week for all the leagues.
I sound for us like that.
That being said, because we're thinking about going ahead with two on consent, is there any questions on the first two items from anybody in the group in the audience tonight? Okay? Not, I would accept the motion to adjourn until regular council meeting?
About the third, you going to ask, about it?
The what now?
I thought you asked for the first two items. Anybody had any discussion?
Right, and I saw no response.
What about number three?
Number three, we're not doing on consent. They'll have time to take that's fine at the meeting. Okay, I have a motion on the floor to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, we'll reconvene at six p.m. And thank you, Chris, for turning the heat. For being here in spite of the weather outside. I see we dropped a few members of the audience in between meetings, but appreciate those of you that stayed with us tonight. Officially call the meeting to order, and Counselor London?
Present.
Counselor Spivey?
Present.
Counselor Gird?
Here.
Counselor Wilson?
Present.
And myself, present. And who would like to take on the minutes?
I will.
Thank you.
Make a motion that the reading of the minutes be dispensed with, that is for February the 5th, 2019, since each member of the council has received a copy and that they be approved as submitted.
Second.
Second, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, motion carries. And Counselor Spivey?
Yes, sir, I would like to make the motion for the approval of the current bills for payment in the amount of $146,643.43.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, that motion carries. And I don't believe we have any professional consultant reports tonight, so Mayor, directly to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. I have just a couple of announcements for the record here and for your information that I want to share with you. I don't know if you all noticed, from the fire department's Facebook page this week, they had a little event that they did, which I thought was very appropriate. There's a teenager from Leeds that was, had been diagnosed with terminal cancer, was in the last stages of that, and had a connection with our police, our fire chief, because he used to work in Leeds and that was kind of connection. Continue to maintain that relationship. And this teenager had a special affinity for the fire department, for the fire service and all, had a longstanding connection with Leeds and now with Irondale. We had the fire department went down, well, our fire chief went down and visited him one day last week and saw that he was nearly in stages of cancer there, and he asked, he asked the boy, Shelton is his name, he asked him, you know, what, is there anything that he could do when he came back the next time to see him? And he said he'd love to see the fire truck one time. And so they took the ladder truck down and got permission from Children's Hospital, got Birmingham Police and Fire and Rescue there to participate. Leeds participated. And our guys took the fire truck down, lifted it up to the window where he was at, and not only he, but lots of the other children that were there came to the window, and we're just so excited about that. He passed away, it was yesterday, Shelton did, and so it was very touching and very fitting. It's on the fire department Facebook page, if you want to read some of the comments and all there, but I thought just another way, you know, one of our goals has been to get the fire department, get our staff, get the police department out in the community and touching people's lives, aside from just the emergencies that they have, and this was one way that they were able to do this week. Made a, made a huge difference. Good experience for our fire department as well. They don't get to use that truck in a lot of situations, so helping them, allowing them to maneuver through the traffic and the structures and all of this was good for them as well. I have an Arbor Day proclamation I want to go ahead and just put into the record, if I will, John Shelton is not here, but he asked that we do this. This is Arbor Day week. Sounds kind of like an oxymoron, Arbor Day week, but it is what it is. It was first started in 1872, it was called Arbor Day then, and from that began, it started in Nebraska, actually, then was spread across the country, throughout the nation and actually the world. Trees are good, you know, renewable source of energy, do a lot of good things, help increase property values wherever they're planted, they're looked on favorably, and so I would like to read this into the record, that I, Charles Moore, Mayor of the City of Irondale, February the 17th, do hereby proclaim, February 17th through the 23rd, 2019, as Arbor Day week in the City of Irondale. So we'll put that into the record and give him a copy of that as well. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce to you a couple of gentlemen that have come to share with us from the Birmingham Iron. Mr. Jay Roberson, no stranger to a number of you I know, served on the Birmingham City Council or at Sanford University, I think, prior to, prior to that, and then Mr. Tyrone King as well. I'm not sure which one of these is going to take the mic first, but here you go.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Moore, and thank you to the President, Moreno, for allowing us to have the opportunity to be here at City Council meeting and to all the members that are here today. It's truly a pleasure to see my good friend, Attorney President today in representing the City of Irondale. But we're here today, Tyrone King and myself, on behalf of the Birmingham Iron. And as you all know, we are Birmingham's new professional football team here in the City of Birmingham. It is our goal to reach out to all municipalities across the central Alabama region to partner, to make sure that you all are aware of who the Birmingham Iron Football Team is. And so we've done that. We have been throughout different council meetings, chamber meetings, and we're here tonight at the one city that we know as Iron Dale, which is very significant. And it's truly a pleasure to be in Iron Dale, Mayor Moore. And our team knows about Iron Dale, and I did some research, Mayor. There's only one other unincorporated city in the state of Alabama that has the name Iron in it, and that's Iron City up in Calhoun County, but it's unincorporated, so it's not a city. So we're in Iron Dale, Alabama, ain't that right, Counsel?
That's right.
All right, so I'm glad to be here in the great city of Iron Dale. And it would be appropriate to make sure that we recognize the city in a way that it's known for its great name. And so tonight, as you and to the citizens that are present here in the audience, we are excited to have something, and Madam Attorney, I want to stake this for public record, these items are under the value of $25. So we're not in violation of the Alabama State Ethics Laws and Commission, we are in compliance. And so I thought it'd be appropriate that we adopt the, trying to help me out? Okay, that we adopt, that we try and adopt the City of Irondale with the Birmingham Iron. And tonight, ladies and gentlemen, and to all that are present here in this great city, I have a special shirt that I want to present to Mayor Moore, if you don't mind. Now can you help me out? On behalf of our general manager, Joe Kendrick, our head coach, Coach Tim Lewis, our president team president, Tom Ward, our entire front office, and our entire football team, the names of Trent Richardson, Luis Perez, we've got great players like, who else have we got? Xavier Dixon from Alabama, Chris Davis from Auburn, all our great players, and our 2-0 record, and to all our Iron fans, Mayor, you wore the appropriate colors tonight, by the way, I do appreciate that. We want to present this shirt to you in honor of Iron Dale tonight. And we have, we're first in our time. You can see that we made sure the iron was big, although the Dale was a little smaller, so congratulations and thank you for being one of our great fans and supporters, Mayor. And we appreciate your support as we work together as a community to... Oh, you going to put it on? I'm going to put it on. All right, the mayor's going to put it on for us. Let's see here, hope I got the right size, Mayor. Yes. All right, you said XL, so I want to make sure it's the right, oh, that's good luck. All right. Don't y'all like, give it, just give it up for Mayor Moore. Iron Dale.
Now, you're going to have to change the name of the team to Iron Dale, Iron Dale.
I'll have to talk to Charlie Ebersol and Bill Polian about that, Counsel, but we want to share some more information with you all. We've had great attendance, it's great family entertainment. I appreciate your mayor stepping up and representing well, along with each and every one of you all, to allow us to be here tonight. But I want to share some ticket information. Tyrone King, he's junior. Now, you know his dad. His father was Tyrone King that played at Alabama in the 70s, a great player at the University of Alabama, and I'm just so proud of this young man and his leadership, what he's doing for our team. And he also played at Alabama to coach Saban on their national championship team in 2009. So Tyrone King, Jr.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, City Council Mayor, for having us. Like Jay was mentioning earlier, we like to be involved in the community. Want to be a part of the community, but we also need your support by coming out to some of the games. Our next game will be March 3rd, so we would love to see Iron Dale in the community to come out to Legion Field. I think the game is at 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock? 3 o'clock, I'm wrong. 3 o'clock, but our lowest ticket is $15, so it's very affordable for each household. We go up to 15, all the way up to 105, of course, that's the premium seat, but we would love Iron Dale to be in attendance to our game on March 3rd, and then March 9th, and then March 31st. So we have three games left, and our home game, State, so please support your Birmingham Iron, all right? Thank you again, City Council, and thank you, Mayor, for having us.
I'm not trying to pull on to me. Thank you, Tyrone. I'm your Tyrone man, thank you so much. Roll, and roll. And we appreciate your, your support. We do have games on March the 3rd against the San Antonio Commanders, March 9th against Orlando Apollos, and that head coach is Steve Spurrier, so we welcome him back to Legion Field, and then March 31st against the Atlanta Legends. We're 2-0, of course, we're the only undefeated teams in the league, and, you know, I just want to make sure you know we're doing things within the school systems with our children. We have the Birmingham Iron Kids Program, and it's a physical fitness program, health and wellness program, to combat childhood obesity amongst young people in the state of Alabama. And so we're working on that. We have a program, we're looking to talk to Jefferson County Schools, we're in Birmingham City Schools, Alabaster City, Shelby County, Talladega, Chilton County, but all those kids are working up to do 20 hours of physical fitness activity in the month of February, and if they accomplish that, they will receive tickets to a game in March. We'd like to extend that to Jefferson County Schools, which are your schools, and look at doing that for the rest of the year, and maybe give tickets for next season, or an autographed picture of Trent Richardson or something like that. So we're involved in the community, want to stay involved in the community, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to the council and Mayor for this opportunity today. Any questions by the council?
You have scheduled for the game?
Yes, sir, you will have also a gift that's under $25, that will have a cap, a tee-shirt, a schedule card, and ticket information. So President Moreno, to your counselors, you will have a bag from the Iron for you to wear with pride, and we hope to see you at the next game.
I don't know about anybody else, but do you have a fat man's tee-shirt in here? No, I need some size.
Okay.
Get some information on that physical fitness.
Yes, you want some information for physical fitness to that counselor. Now, it's Counselor London on you, Counselors. Any other questions?
Can we make some information on that physical fitness program?
Yes, sir, we can, Counselor London. I can get that to you, and get that information out to you to talk how we can implement it in our schools. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
And thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mayor Moore, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go. Get a quick picture.
Do you all want to sit down and get a picture? Okay, you're good?
Yeah, you're the show tonight, you've got the shirt.
The beauty of the...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all so much.
Was that all for you?
That's it.
Thank you so very much. And I don't see any department heads here report. Start off, Counselor London, can I have your pick, please?
All right, I'm going to have, first of all, I can either one. Just want, I think the mayor got a call from Dick and Greg, he's showing $1,500 to the baseball, he's a baseball guy, so he should be receiving that and doing mail pretty quick.
That's very good. We know if he's submitted that $2,500 he promised for Park, I'll get touch with him and find out when we're going to get it.
Mr. Stewart will be out probably for about three weeks, seven weeks.
Two weeks.
Okay, so, okay. Counsel Spivey?
Two things, I want to go ahead and cover a few numbers on the financial side. My outlook is having a blast right now, sorry about that. Give me one second to confirm.
Can you give me your copy of the latest?
No, I've got it right here. It's just decided to freak out me. Outstanding. All right, so on the finance side, some numbers I wanted to throw out was to state that currently revenues are of $8,8279.87, which exceeds the expenses of $7,50,618.42. That is a, first number being bigger than the second number, which is highly important, That's as through January 31st of this year. I think we probably all saw that number and thought good things. That's great that our numbers are performing the way that they need to. However, we know that lots of revenues flow in this time of year, so that surplus, we have to be careful with that surplus to make sure that we're spending the money that we budgeted according to plan. That surplus is not just extra... Um, that surplus is not just extra money that we've earned out of, of thin air. Um, that's, it's, it's planned that we would have a surplus by this time to carry us through the year. So as property tax and, and, and tags and business licenses all continue to roll in, um, expenses will also continue to happen at the department level. So just wanted to throw those numbers out there. Another thing, and, um, we've been talking a lot about Iron Beach. Um, I know we've been unable to kind of, kind of come together with an agreement on them. Trudy sent me an email, um, just kind of recapping her commitment to the community, and I just felt it was important to, to throw that out there. Um, she said that, um, her and her husband and their gym will continue to take care of our firefighters and police officers, um, in this interim, um, until we're able to decide on anything if we choose to decide anything. So I felt that was important, um, since they're such a great member of the community. That's all that happened.
Counsel, Mayor?
I don't have anything.
Counsel Wilson?
Yes, um, just wanted to announce that, um, we had our Holiday Gardens Neighborhood Association meeting, uh, last week, which turned out to be, uh, very good. Uh, we have several, uh, events that'll be coming up. I don't have the calendar here in front of me right now, but, um, be on the lookout for some things to go on in the Holiday Gardens community. Also, I want to officially announce the kickoff of a program that I've started, it's called See It Through. Uh, I don't know if anyone is a, like to read poems, but there's a poem called See It Through, it's called, it's by a great guest, uh, and it's a very inspirational poem that really that I say to myself every morning, but if you haven't read the poem, you need to read it, it's called See It Through. But this particular program that I've started, uh, in the schools, in the middle and high schools here in the Irondale community, um, it's the letter C, it through, that's how it's pronounced, that's how it's spelled. And this particular program is, will offer inspiration and guidance to our students in the middle school and high schools here in the Irondale community. Uh, it's, it's designed to reach, uh, for those students to reach their goals, and, uh, no matter what, you know, what your grades are, if you don't make the A and B on the road, if you're a regular C and D student, you know, it still doesn't, uh, mean that you can't succeed in life. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to have some of my corporate friends and some of my other, um, friends in, in certain positions to come by and just offer a kind of guidance and inspiration to these students, and, uh, probably leave some goodies with them also. So just want to let everybody know, this, this is what be going on in the Irondale community. I feel as if being a steward of the community, um, you know, this is something that I think we should need to reach out for, especially with our kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just real quickly, had the pleasure of attending a ribbon cutting on February twelfth at Lawson State. And, uh, this is a program that's been initiated between Mercedes and between Lawson State. Uh, some of you may know they have a very active mechanical training school that's been in place. They will now add training for mechanical repair on Mercedes vehicles. Uh, very well attended, you had the Secretary of Labor for the state, had members of Birmingham City Council, other officials, the college was well represented, but Mercedes is so committed to this that they are actually, they presented the college with two brand-new vehicles to use in the training, uh, plus they also are committed to cover tuition for the students making certain grade level up to sixty-five percent for the first two years and possibly more if they maintain their gra, uh, average. So again, something in conjunction with the company that we have in our presence, and these students will also rotate through the Vans facility and be paid as employees when they're doing their rotation. So an extremely good program, uh, considering that, that, uh, particular operation is going from one million square feet to six million square feet and from about thirty thousand vehicles to three hundred thousand vehicles a year. So Mercedes is moving right along, considering that was the first time in the history of the company they ever put a manufacturing facility outside of Germany. So it's done real well, uh, just a sign, a good thing that's good for all of us, even though it's not sitting on our doorstep. Uh, I don't believe I see anybody with reports of boards or non-council committees.
I think that'd be a, that's a great opportunity, uh, just we have the Vans program running that city.
Uh, but the, uh, we have the tenants of the principals, uh, there, so they know about it, and, uh, hopefully we'll be able to tie something together.
That's great.
Thank you. And so, Counsel Beard, would you like to go with the agenda?
I will. I'll make a motion that the agenda be, uh, approved with the addition of, uh, number one being put on consent and number two being put on consent.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And at this point, do we have any comments from anyone in the audience on the one agenda item only, that's number three? All right? That being said then, uh, Mayor, your name appears after number three, would you like to put it out or do you?
I, I think we've already talked about it.
Okay. This is basically Resolution two oh one nine dash oh nine, authorizing the mayor to sign a waiver of right to enforce section two of the settlement agreement with the Infinity Hospital.
I'll make a motion that Revolution twenty nineteen dash zero nine be approved.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. At this point, do we have any general comments from anyone in the audience? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second? All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.